We're going to start. Thank you for being here tonight at 1:17. Bill, at the council meeting, please stand. Prayer from Pastor Steve Iyers, Flatline Connect, and the pledge.
Lord, we just thank you for today. We thank you that you're our mighty God. We thank you for your love and your grace. Lord, I pray that you continue to guide leaders of our community, give them wisdom, Lord, and give them protection. And we just thank you for the opportunity to serve here in the village. And Lord, I pray that we can serve you each and every day. In Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see. Roll call.
Bailey?
Here.
Bassett?
Here.
Beverly?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Egley?
Here.
Do I need a motion to for the...
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda.
One second.
So much. There's no legislation.
Oh, okay. Never mind about the motion. Next, we have Taylor Klepper here. Taylor, you want to step up?
Yeah. Taylor Klepper here on behalf of the HBA. Trying to figure out the lease situation and all of that stuff with the park down there. Seems that, I guess I'm not sure who or whatever, I guess it's very stuck on the HBA paying to lease the fields. Frankly, it's not the dollar amount, it's the principle that frustrates the board. Obviously speaking on behalf of the board. But it's just with the previous investments, and I mean, we operate fully on sponsorships and it just seems like, you know, it was a battle five years ago, it's a battle now. It's gonna be a battle whenever this new lease expires. And it just seems pointless, I guess, as long as we're continuing to invest in the fields, invest in the facilities, and continue to make improvements. Basically, all with sponsors, not basically, with 100% with sponsored dollars. As a service, you know, where it's all volunteers. It just doesn't make sense to me why this continues to be a battle. I guess I'm kind of asking that question.
I know, me and you talked a little bit about the situation over the course of time. I know council's had some input. We sat here years ago and had the same discussion. Does anybody, any council have any input on the situation?
I thought it's always been that way. Whenever you got the field, you rented it.
There's always been a lease signed.
Yeah.
For the concession building and for the, for the fields.
But the dollar value hasn't been, if there wasn't a dollar value, it was basically a free lease for last...
I thought that was just for a few years.
That was, that was for five years. Before that, we had a contract and it was on Park Board president.
Well, I can't speak to before any of that.
Yeah.
I guess at this point, you know, that was before the HBA had started actually investing a lot into the park. You know, just a couple of examples, you know, with concrete seats and canopies, that was approximately a $90,000 investment made on behalf of the HBA through fundraising and personal donations and donated labor and all of that. Last year alone, we spent $12,500 just in regrading fields to make them playable. So, just in that alone, we're $102,500, and I was just running rough numbers. At the $700 lease rate that you guys are asking for, it's 140 years of equivalent dollars associated with that.
I'm not saying we're not under what he's asking for because if you look at the base electrical usage for that concession building that you guys use, $33.84 is the minimum with no use. And it costs us $527.84 for when you guys are using it. The cost of the paper towels and soap and toilet paper, everything is another $285. So, the village spent $813 out of our pocket for you guys to use the fields, and we're asking for 700. But I've worked with the school, and the school has put in over $100,000 in baseball, softball. We pay a lease agreement too. Every year, they sign a contract for one year or however many years, but they pay the village to also mow and maintain the fields for that. Different times, I think, because I knew this was gonna come up, like, if you had one of your renters come into you and they have a rent that they owe you every month, and they decide that they want to paint it and change the lighting and put a new stove and all this stuff in, are you gonna discount their monthly rent the next month?
Absolutely. If they're making improvements to the property.
Well, even if you didn't ask for it?
They put all new...
To make it more habitable, yeah. If they would take on making investments in the place, yeah. Obviously, I operate very differently than most of the landlords in this community, but that's how I would take that approach.
It's always, ever since I've been, I was on the Park Board 16 years ago, and we always had a lease agreement for the fields, a lease agreement for an extra fee for the lights, for baseball. And then when they, you guys done a lot of renovations and upgrades, we said we're gonna take it away for five years. And now that time's lapsed, and so we were going back to the lease agreement. I'm for still having the lease agreement personally. I'm just one of them.
I think it's important to have a lease in place, but the dollar value, it's, I mean, I guess at this point it's arbitrary. I mean, it's an arbitrary number if you guys aren't even covering expenses at that point. And that's, it's the principle of it, you know, it's, we're dealing with donor dollars, so we're...
Are the donors complaining?
Yeah, there have been several.
Is this even $13 that we paid out of pocket like last year? That doesn't even include the person lining the fields, dragging the fields, taking the trash out from the events?
I think it's also, it's also important to remember that you saying "we" paying for that is also the community's money that is paid in tax revenue. So, it's a service that everybody is volunteering towards to provide a service to the community, and you're taking donor dollars that is going, basically, you're just taking that money. And so we have to, you know, for example, $700, that's two Little League baseball teams to sponsor. So, I'll, I can call Jim Schmidt or Hickson Banker, whomever, and just, I mean, we basically just tell them that, hey, your money is going straight to the lease, not to your team.
What is your $1 million, like, insurance policy? What does that cost you?
I don't have that in front of me right now.
Because I think it's a lot cheaper to have background checks done. But that's coming money from donors to pay for that.
That, no, that was all, we didn't pay for the background checks.
You guys don't do background checks because you guys had a couple guys that you guys wanted to coach that did, went past one.
I can't speak to that. I wasn't part of the board at that time.
But the insurance comes out of your revenue that you collect from sponsorships, like your umpires.
Yeah.
You know, your concessions, all that kind of stuff, all comes from the total revenue that you collect through your sponsorships and donations to the whole of the ball association every year.
Yeah, sponsorships are a part of it. Obviously, we do fundraising and everything else. I mean, it's just one of those things that's constantly a battle, and it just seems pointless to me. And it's the $700, I mean, it's frankly, an arbitrary number that, I mean, I don't understand. What is the $700 gaining the village if you're not covering expenses or anything like that, other than just a fee?
I think it should be more. I wasn't the one that did the contract, so...
Should we inflate the number to make people happier?
I never seen the contract until just recently, so I asked him where he came up with the number at, and I asked him for a copy of the electric bills. It doesn't even cover the cost.
I think having a number is good. It shows investment, right? It shows ownership of that. If you guys are willing to partner with us and go in, you know, that $700, the village obviously is a profit outfit. Plus, if you've looked at the projects that we've done down there, I mean, almost $50,000 in...
$63,000 between the projects.
Right. And then we have fencing. Were we doing the fencing down there this year? And I wouldn't have any problem, you know, you guys sitting down with the park director prior to budget season and talking about projects that you want, so we can work with you and partner with you on those projects. I just think giving a number allows you to have ownership of that, right? It allows us to be able to partner and you to invest in it, and not just be something like, oh, it's just a contract, doesn't matter, there's no money attached to it anyways. It'd be so much easier for you to break it. Now, it's like, it's giving its substance.
I guess I don't, I mean, we've invested $102,000 in the last five years down there. If that doesn't say skin in the game, I don't know what that...
Is that an investment or a donation?
It's an investment to make the fields playable.
How much of that came out of HBA's revenue?
That was 100%, all through donations and like sponsorships and all of that.
So, donations.
If I could say something, what they've done to the Little League fields, they're incredible. I mean, they look nice, they're clean, they look 100% better than when I was a coach down there my son played. You know, we played, and back then, I'm sure they paid a rental fee for the fields and, you know, we charged the softball association, like I said, the school gets a rental fee kind of thing, to help with some of the maintenance for, you know, and they've already discussed all that. What people have donated to those facilities is incredible. What that organization did, top-notch. I mean, they're beautiful, probably some of the nicest baseball fields around. And I know you're continuing to add improvements.
Well, we're planning on it.
Right.
That's not guaranteed.
Right. But at the same time, to me, here the last, I would say, four, five, six years, we've kind of stepped as a council and added some more line items to the budget. I sat on Park Board. It was hard to get money sometimes for the park. You know, we need new things or some dilapidated fencing, and, you know, we would try to get some of that done. Not always, but some things got completed. So, to me, it's a collaboration of working with the different organizations that utilize the fields and then the village staff to help maintain those fields during the playing season. Kind of thing. Does that make sense? I can't, they've done incredible jobs down there with upgrades of their facility. They wouldn't be where they're at today without those donations, bottom line. We're just asking for a little payback, kind of not payback, but a little investment back into the rentals like we charge everybody else to help maintain the fields through the playing season. And even afterwards, I mean, the fields still get mowed, you know, they're looked at. We have other improvements that we need done down there. You know, Cory's come up with some ideas, and the new park director, I'm sure, is gonna have some ideas to help with those improvements. So, to me, it's a collaboration between the village, taxpayers, and the village and everything. And if you guys continue to make improvements, they're gonna be better for kids down the road. Long past after you guys, you know, your kids go through the program. We're making it better. Both organizations are making it better for the future, you know, so... That's my view. Anybody else?
Okay, so you're stuck on the 700?
I mean, somebody could make a motion.
That's what, that's what he come up with. That wasn't my number.
Yours would've been higher.
It would've been. I mean, we rent the building out to the school, and, you know, I try to cover costs and expenses to do that. Cory, he wanted to have his little kids' basketball thing there, but it wasn't all the actual kids. He got an invoice just like anyone else. We got an invoice to rent the fieldhouse.
Which, I understand, like...
Daddy daughter dance this weekend, class of 2026, it's a fundraiser. We still have an invoice for him.
Yeah, but that, they're not investing in the facility. They're utilizing the space, and that's the biggest sticking point.
Well, that's still taxpayer-funded, that building. Just like the land down at the park. I mean, that's your argument, right, is that it's taxpayer-funded?
No, it's that we're continuing to invest, I mean, we've got, we want to build a $50,000 batting cage down there this year possibly. Obviously, that's not gonna happen this year, but, I mean, there's planned investments, but...
Well, and I would love for you guys to sit down with us and talk about what some of those projects are. Like I said, he's doing some fencing project. If I knew that this was on your guys' agenda, I would have loved to have reallocated that money for something like this. I do feel like there should be a partnership here. I do feel like the HBA doesn't really partner with the village. But you don't have to, right? Like, you don't have to, you guys can be independent. I would love to see all of your guys' money run through the village, much like Hicks TV or the disc golf course, so that, you know, that money can be present, so there's never a question about what's happening to the money and where's the money coming from and who's funding, what are you guys funding, what are you doing with it? Right? Because immediately, I think of how you guys are generating money, and you have a lot of revenues that you generate money.
100%.
And there's, I know your guys' All-Star tournament brings in a decent amount of funding, right?
That's how you fund these improvements.
Right, right. But I'm, that's what I'm saying is, we wouldn't mind to say, oh, you guys are investing in it. Isn't a fair statement because we are, especially when we know that there's a project that needs done. We knew that the lights needed done, that's why we kind of expedited that. You guys, we're not gonna have lights last year. We couldn't get the replacement parts. So, we want those things to happen down there. We don't want to take this away. Nor do I want that $700 to be the reason why you guys crumble, right? If that number is going to break you guys, then we need to talk about that. I don't want to make a profit off of you guys.
It's the principle, it's not the dollar value. We can pay that. It's the fact that businesses, families, everybody's investing their time, money, and labor, and then the village is saying, hey, we want 700 bucks out of that.
I think it'd be one thing if the village says, we want $700, and then we go and buy a brand-new something shiny, right? But we're not. We're taking that $700.
Well, that's debatable, but that's another conversation.
I mean, I said that we need to, the Eagles donate money all the time to baseball, softball, all the programs. I have no, no problems whatsoever if that money goes towards the cost of renting the facilities or anything. I mean, it's an expense that your association has, and that's what donors typically are there to do, help you with your expenses, whether it's for the kids or for the, so the kids have somewhere to play. I don't think that's ever been a question for any Eagle members when they've donated.
It takes a, I'm not sure how to say this, but, you know, somebody does something and they stand back and expect a pat on the back. I don't have much respect for that. Somebody does something and you don't hear anything about it except the people that rant and rave at what a beautiful job they've done and things like that. That's when you gotta praise the people that did it. You're kind of feeding us this, well, we did all this, and you want $700.
That's the principle. That's the fact.
Well, we've always charged. We charge the school.
Charge the council.
Anybody else that would come and play on those fields gets charged.
Metropolitan Park Board pays us to maintain their side of it too.
So, I don't see...
I mean, is there a property?
I don't see a difference. I mean, what you did down there is wonderful. But nobody asked you to do it. There wasn't a committee from the town or the school or anybody that went to you and went, hey, is there any way that you can put this together? Nobody did that.
No, but historically, the village hasn't invested in those. So, the HBA took it upon themselves to make that a nice and playable place.
I think that's part of the ownership I was talking about earlier, right? Is having ownership in your organization, having ownership of this contract. And, I mean, that $700 really is gonna be a drop in the bucket for you guys also, right? But at least that contract has some grit to it and has some ownership to it. If that contract was absolutely zero, you wouldn't have any worries about breaking it. You wouldn't, you wouldn't even think twice about it, right? This at least holds you accountable to something.
So, like, you say it's like a drop in the bucket for them, but it's even less of a drop in the bucket for us. I mean, the fact of the matter is, they have invested over six years. They plan on investing more, and the $700 is like nothing. It really is like nothing.
So, anybody that comes to use those fields, we tell them there's no charge?
Well, no, this is a little different. They invested over $100,000.
It's the same thing. Everybody was saying...
You let him do it?
The kids do it. It's not him, it's the HBA. And it's the parents of this town's kids that are benefiting from that.
But what if a group of buddies went down there and just started playing?
Playing their own.
Do they have to come up here and pay somebody and ask for permission to do it first? I mean...
They don't have any cost for the concession.
Do we charge them? If they don't pay them, playing the fields, they don't drag them? Tennis and pickleball, are we gonna charge for everything else too, or...
There's no setup for $10,000 or something.
That's where I'm afraid we're headed towards here.
To me, none of the, like, the basketball, tennis, all that stuff doesn't require anything from our staff. They don't have to drive the fields, they don't have to line the fields, they don't have to take the trash out.
We have a park, we want people to use it.
Yeah, but we've been asked over the years to help maintain the fields better with, you know, if it rains, to have more, and I know Cory said, and all you guys, you guys step up. You get a rain event, you guys are on top of it, so those kids can play that night. They all step up and...
Correct, and that's why we spent $12,000 last year just in dirt work to regrade the fields to make them playable. Because frankly, they weren't, they couldn't handle rain. And it's just like the junior high. Junior High is not playing at the park this year because frankly, Field 3 is not playable. We had to integrate that.
And it hasn't been playable, you know, if it's dry, they play on it. If it rains, it's...
Which one's Field 3?
Pony.
Yeah, Pony has it.
I don't think it's been playable in 40 years.
Correct, and that's, that's one of the possible investments that we are looking at. We would like to make, you know, it's the batting cages. Those need a lot of work. We want to get a new, we would love to have a fourth field built up there. Let the Pony League be a softball field, because that frankly, that needs about $30,000 to $40,000 worth of upgrading in tile and drainage, and we're just at a point where it's, you know, are we gonna keep making investments? I don't know.
Counsel, you've heard both sides of the story. You had your input from counsel. I mean, if anybody wants to make a motion or talk about anything different?
Just to be curious, if you don't continue to make investments, what will happen to the money?
It'll get spent, we'll spend everything. So, we're a nonprofit, we're registered by...
Right, 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 I get that, I get that.
So, we can't just hold cash. So, we have to invest what we have now.
So, but what will you do with the money, though?
So, it takes, right now, our registration brings in about $9,000. We have, just last year, it costs right about 21, about $25,000 to operate the league, the jerseys, hats. Umpires, umpires are our biggest expense. So, we have, we only bring in through registration and sponsors. We don't bring in enough money to cover that. So, it would sit, it would sit there until it runs dry for the next, probably, if we're... We have about $40,000 right now.
So, for registration and sponsorship, how much does your All-Star tournament bring in?
It's arbitrary. I mean, it's different every year, but that brings in about, I think last year brought in about $7,000.
And do you just use that to pay the difference for...
Yeah, that's what makes up the shortfall.
All concessions.
I don't have that number in front of me yet. So, basically, we would have, I don't know, the field, the banner sponsors, that's probably... Three probably, seven, eight, one. So, $17,000 roughly is what our, what we bring in through sponsors and kids registration, which of that, a fair portion of that gets reimbursed to the families that they work their concession stand. So, there's about a $5,000 shortfall, five to, actually, $7,000 shortfall. So, based on that, that would last about five years.
Well, you say, Taylor, I appreciate you coming in. I mean, to me, if somebody wants to make a change to the contract, I mean, that's kind of what we set out there right now for them to pay to that. But if there's a motion or a different direction for that, I mean, you bring it up, not, that's what you're asking for, so... I'll entertain a motion one way or another, direction.
As far as on the contract, what's the $50 per field for other uses? What's that give us?
That gets your fields lined, correct.
But that, that's not...
That's not far there.
No, like you're saying, I'm wondering what that $50 gets.
That also gets you bathrooms, right?
I make a motion to, even the way that Cory had it, even though I think that number is lower than what it should be because it doesn't cover the cost.
One second.
Could've gone second. Roll call.
Bailey?
No.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Miller?
Come back to me in about 10 seconds.
Martin?
No.
Anthony?
Yes.
I guess the only reason I would vote no is, you know, the arbitrary number. I'll vote no then.
No, don't.
Vote no. No, I'm voting no.
Yes, oh, no.
I mean, if we're just voting on this, I guess they have a number in there. It doesn't make sense to me. I mean, that number ought to mean something. So, we let anybody that wants to go down there and play and make money off of it? And the village does nothing in return?
There would still be field rentals, like, probably it's not associated...
You won't have to pay field rental, right?
Well, we're, we're investing our capital into improvement, our field, that field rental's...
But you're doing that, you're doing, you're going into that without a contract. You're doing that...
No, there's still a contract in place.
There's a contract?
We're still signing a lease that requires us to have our insurance.
But do you have a contract that says what you're going to do and how much of what you're gonna do per year as you spend your money down there? No.
No.
No. And nothing down there has ever been under a contract. It's just you guys, whoever's down there goes, hey, let's, we ought to do this, we ought to do that. Town knows nothing about it. There's nowhere in the world that you could, you couldn't come down here and start setting up pool tables and stuff in the fire hall because it makes good money for the kids.
I'm not saying there can't be discussion on capital projects. Obviously, it's the village, it's the village property. The problem has just been that, I mean, historically, the village hasn't made those, the village hasn't made those investments historically.
Well, the votes went, so there's no use talking about it anymore.
Oh, it's a tie.
That's a tie, goes the mayor. I just, I mean, the amount of money, I was the one taking the, our village administrator's recommendation, what he thought was a fair, even though I don't know where he came up with the number. That doesn't include all the hours that they spend on the field taking water off the fields or the time to drag the fields. I don't figure the mowing, because they gotta mow the field no matter what. But if there's no games there in the spring or in the fall, late fall, they don't have to drag the fields. They have to line the fields. They don't have to spend days, or, I mean, not days, hours, trying to get the water off the field for another rain that's coming up. We spend a lot of money that's not even, barely, never even get close to the $700 that you're looking for.
Yeah, my turn to vote. All right, the tie? And I'm voting yes, and just due to the fact that if we've done this before and we've let everybody else with the contracts go null and void on the contracts, we, the softball association, and we've also invested more money than we ever have in the past couple of years into the park for lighting and everything else. So, I, like I said, I talk about it as a collaboration between council and the ball association. I think it's a fair number to help with maintenance, upkeep of the bathrooms, the dirt, and everything else. So, I just think it's fair. If you're gonna do that for one group, you gotta, you gotta let everybody go out of, get out of the contract.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Next on the agenda is approval of bills list.
What happened?
No, I'm sorry, minutes, minutes.
Anybody have questions about the minutes? Put it in the packet.
I object to the language in one of those minutes. Was this the minutes from the February 18th meeting where I was here and you said I wasn't? All right, cool. You're in here.
I'm in. Correction, I'm the last, not the 24th.
Good. I don't want to be criticized for not being here. You're a meeting behind. I'll go to a further minutes.
Packet.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Abstain.
Bailey?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Approval of bills listed in your packet. Questions, concerns?
Make a motion to approve the bills. Send it down, say anything.
I'll say.
Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Boards and commissions met. We got a business board. And the planning commission met. Did you have something change in your packet?
On the mayor, on the planning, were they gonna change some ordinances? Are those gonna be more defined so that we know more exactly how they're going to phrase that?
I think they would have to be before, if you have to vote on them, I think, before they would...
I hope so, yeah. Where's 101 Bunnell? That's what I was thinking, you know. Is 101 Bunnell that old, that curve up us?
Yes.
Yes. They just walked down.
Sure, anything on that? Committee reports, so we got free fire committee and ordinance committee. Administrator's report.
Hopefully, they've all seen the street sweeper sitting out there. That'll go into service once they get a little bit more training on it from best of one. The new salt bunker at the wastewater plant, a couple more panels up on the roof and it'll be ready to go and we can relocate all the salt to that bunker. Splash pad, did activate some of the fixtures and was removed last week. That's the fixtures that they currently have up. They'll be back in later this week to put the rest of the fixtures up, weather permitting. We will have to put some type of concrete approach to bring that, that concrete there at the shelter house up to the parking lot to ADA compliant.
Have you contracted anybody for that yet?
Nagels is supposed to give me a number on it and we don't have to go with them. If we don't like their number, we can...
Sure.
See Nagels every day.
Yeah. It's going to have to be something fairly quick before everybody gets busy.
Sure. And radiator, the water treatment plant, the generator was replaced due to it springing a leak and obviously it was original radiator for that generator. Then Parks Department's just been busy getting things put in the park, getting all the rubbish from the winter months cleaned up and working on fields.
Where are you getting that aluminum area you're built at?
Zuber welding down in, we're done. It's, I think it's built.
Yeah, it's done. I was looking at it yesterday. Hit it before you.
Yeah, the original one is a steel one, so those holes rust up really quick on it. It's ridled from 1985.
Yeah, it's got a good life out of steel.
Yep.
I'm original from 1985.
And those trays aren't removable than the old one, so you're in there, basically you be in a rubber suit. Anyone's got removable tray so they can pull them out, pressure wash them, put them back in.
Tommy has the next word. That's all I got.
Footage report.
Any storm damage at the park in the weekend?
All the dugout stayed intact.
Solicitor's report.
Okay, first reading of ordinance 2025-03 authorizing the fiscal officer to transfer First reading of ordinance 2025-04 to amend appropriations. And then second reading of resolution 2025-06 by caption only to allow administrators to apply for CDVG grant for the Columbia Hatterford Water Main Replacing Project in a certain emergency.
I know we are behind on that one, right? That was so, can we still proceed forward with it?
I'd love to suspend the rules.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Abley?
Yes.
Third and final reading of resolution 2025-06 by caption only to allow administrator to apply for CDVG grant for the Columbia Hatterford Water Main Replacing Project in a certain emergency.
To move second.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
For ordinance 2025-04, it says in section two that it's to declare an emergency. Does that mean we have to pass it as an emergency?
No, that's where I'm giving that decree, so.
All right, thank you, Rachel. Department heads, Chief Danick? I mean, Chief Fisher?
Yeah. Guy, any Bob, I don't have any.
You guys good?
The airplane will be in shortly.
The airplane? Appreciate that. Fire, Bruce?
I have a person I want to bring up to you for, to be hired. His name is Michael Thomas. He's a paramedic from Williams County. Be working for us part-time where ads needed. He's had probably 30-plus years as being an EMT slash paramedic, so he's definitely got the qualifications to do the job. He does live in Edgerton, so he's exploring new opportunities and when I heard that he was possibly available, I reached out to him and had a session. Michael Thomas, in no relation to the gentleman that I brought to you guys during the PFE meeting.
You know, what kind of commitment he has for the department hour-wise?
So, so right now, that's going to be, that's just up in the air because he's starting a new, new position. So the one thing that we did talk about is if we get into a situation where the crew is up north, a BLS crew is up north, and they need ALS intercept, that he can come down, which I have no problem with. But, yeah, he, he's, like, I might be able to give you a couple, couple days a month, but I'd much rather have a couple days than no days, you know what I'm saying? So, and, and just having the ability to have some, another paramedic, you know, respond, that takes, that takes a load off of me.
I'll move to approve.
I make the recommendation for Michael Thomas to be hired as a part-time paramedic. Does he have that background check or any of that, right, or is he already, since he's current?
He's, he's currently working over at Williams County, so I can probably get his background checked and stuff. His big thing was he wanted to still maintain his purs and I'm like, yeah, we, we are purs, so, so he's, he's like, okay.
I'll second Rob's motion.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Abley?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
And the only other thing that I have that's brought up here in PFE, I do need to speak either to Personnel Committee or have an executive session about a situation that has arisen over there, so, or could be. So I just need to let you guys know.
Personnel, I mean, we've got a couple other items we've got to discuss, anybody that Cheryl sent us here in the last couple of weeks, so just want to start there, but you don't know how urgent it is if you need to deny it.
I, I, I would be...
I don't know the topic they're talking about. We don't.
That's a different one.
That's a different.
Okay.
Well, the situation is, Bruce, I mean, would you rather have executives...
I would, I would rather, I would rather have the executives so that way I got it, I have an idea of, you know, that way I can tell you guys.
You have the one opposed, the one I thought was probably going, that's what he's probably talking about.
Yes, that's what he's...
I'm recommending we go to executive session after council here and we can all hear it, so.
Okay. And last but not least, we have train, two trainings this week. Tomorrow with Parkview, Saturday with our Northwest Ohio EMS. So you guys are more than, more than welcome to attend either one. The one tomorrow is going to be police and fire have been invited as well. The one on Saturday is mainly for, for EMS, so. All righty?
Roll quick, if you want to give them a quick, go ahead.
Is it this Thursday meeting?
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's for us only for, okay, because that meeting that, that you're talking about, you guys will be having an overall meeting with the people in Defiance. So as soon as I, as soon as I have a date on that, I will forward that to you guys, so.
Okay, that's up to your report, though. Me and Bruce attended our last township meeting. I think all three of them right before I'm, we went to them all. The receptive, we gave an update of what's going on, past, present, and future goals of the EMS department, so, had a nice meeting with all of them, so we got that taken care of. And then, I know I had asked, along with Bruce getting with Michelle, Med Account, we want her to come up and give an update on the billing and how that's going. It's been a year now, as of March, I believe, they started the process, so.
Isn't she coming next month?
Yep, April 7.
Yep, so she's coming up. I keep numbers on that.
So just real quick, if you've been noticing that we, that both departments have been really busy here lately, we, in the past week and a half, we've had days where we've had five and six runs per day, so, yeah, we're, we are, both, both departments have been pretty good, pretty busy, so.
Well, it seems to be the trend for the county. And so, where, Defiance, have you provided any support for Defiance?
No, but Defiance the other night had their hands full. They had, I think, six squad runs at the same time, along with their, along with their fire department being out. So, yeah. Oh, good news, the EMTs are taking a final on Wednesday, so we should be able to start seeing some of them take their national registry, which, which will get us, we'll start seeing how they pass out.
What's the turnaround time for that?
So if they take their registry and they pass, they'll know within 24 hours, within 24 hours, then they send that to the state. The state has another 24 hours before they issue the certification. After they issue the certification, then they have to do right time with a seasoned EMT, and everything's going to be competency-based, so if they perform well, then they can be released earlier. If they don't perform well, then they'll probably be on track for a little longer. So they will be writing terms as needed. And every EMT has to do that.
I think you got some good younger fellows there.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Fiscal officers report.
We have a shortlist today, just above status and catch summary. Police and mayor's court report. And tonight on the desk I put out, I think, cheese and chenille first. Every liquor license in Hattieville has to be renewed. And so if you have any objections, again, just carry it out once. And I also add a list of all the ones that are active, attached to it.
Is that a vote on the road, next meeting, or anybody with objections? And the public, too? Can the public have any objections, though? Just go.
It's only for objections. I mean, we don't vote on it, do we?
No. It's only if you have an objection to a certain one. Down the platoon first.
Do you think you renew it automatically? Oh, yeah, I was going to ask.
Case against you.
Question for Cheryl. Very good, thank you, Cheryl. All right, my, my turn? All right. I attended, they had an annual health board meeting this last Tuesday, March 11. They presented their annual report. I have a copy of that if anybody wants to see it for the county, kind of their numbers and our different outreach and the levels of people and families and everybody they've reached out to. I did attend last Thursday the RGP, it's a regional growth partnership. The focus of the meeting was to show how Northwest Ohio is sustaining industrial growth, looking to the future for viable energy options, logistic needs, and infrastructure improvements, along with marketing our region for new business opportunities in this market, this day and age, we're competing not only with other areas, regions of Ohio, but states, the country, you know, communities of all, all shapes and sizes, so they help bring industrial site development things to our, our community and to Northwest Ohio. So still working on the 150th celebration committee, still working on that. Appreciate everybody doing that. There might be some changes. We're about two months out before that June 5th, 6th, and 7th happened, but things are changing daily, sometimes weekly, about different activities going on, so, but I appreciate everybody working on that to make Hicksville celebration special. The Easter egg hunt is at the park. This is, call out for Corey and Carrie and all the sponsors for that, April 12th at 1:00 PM. Correction, if I'm wrong, registration begins at 11:30 at the park pavilion. I want to thank Carrie and Corey and their families and all the volunteers and sponsors. I know Steve Church does a lot with that. They're starting to put, how many thousands of eggs are you putting together?
25,000 eggs need candy. You are invited down to Lifeline Connect Ministry Center to 26th, the 2nd, and the 9th, I believe it'll work.
26th?
26th is, they're all Wednesdays, 26th, the 2nd, and the 9th. We might be able to get you some pizza and you'll be sick of looking at plastic eggs and candy.
And that's not, you've got tons of two locations, Steve.
Yeah, that's down at 104 Fountain Street there behind SMTA, that's Ministry Center.
What time?
6 o'clock until you decide to go home.
6:00 in the morning.
If that's what it takes, you want to stay that long, I'll make you work.
So they heard it on, you probably didn't hear that, right, Bill? Did the speakers pick it up or?
Yeah, it's good. I've already shared that information. I'll do it again.
All right, sure, on Hicks TV, thank you. And thanks to Steve and everybody who helps. That's a special day for a lot of kids and families. It's pretty awesome, so thank them for that. A call out, just Will Burns with Mommy Valley. He was our economic development person here the last couple of years, helping with the RLF program here for Hicksville. He retired. They have a new person in charge of that, Nikki Reese. In fact, I got to meet her. She went to the meeting there and for Northwest Ohio RGP, so a nice lady, has some background in economic development, things like that, so I think she'll represent the village, Mommy Valley very well in the future for site developments and help with the redevelopment loan fund, so.
She was down there, wasn't she?
Thank you for that.
Wasn't she down there to start with?
No, she, Nikki Reese.
Nikki did?
Yeah. I think I saw they got the wrong business card or something. I go, no. Thanks to Will Burns for helping us with some, you know, grant, grants and loans here in the village for the last couple of years. And that's all I have, but thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Or don't?
No. Exact concession.
Okay, roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Good.
Don't cry. You'll have to clean this.
Save me. Yes, sorry.
Yes.
Beverly?
Yeah.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yeah.
I can't even work at all.
I can go through.
Hey.